Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes on the motion.
Good evening, Commissioner Charlie Prattaville, New Brunswick. Editor of New Brunswick State Community Newspaper here, available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. I want to follow up on Danielle's comments on 366. I certainly wouldn't suggest that Pratt shouldn't be able to continue their work as the Fair Housing Counseling Agency for the county, but I do think that this board should be concerned about that organization moving out of New Brunswick, leaving their headquarters behind the city where they were founded and had done great work for 50 years. I know in the past various board members have, if you're on this board, have served on the Pratt Board, and I know that they've had a meaningful impact and a serious presence here in New Brunswick, and I'm afraid that that's going to change now that the development that I spoke about a couple of months ago is pushing them out and also dozens of small businesses that are...
I don't think it's going to make a difference of where the location is, the services that they want to provide, and the services that they get funded through us, the state or the federal government. Where their offices are, I don't think it's going to make a difference at all on the services.
I respectfully disagree. I think that a lot of times people that are in need, need to speak to somebody in person, and it really makes a big difference in some cases, especially when they're dealing with folks who might not have the latest technology, might not have access to a vehicle, might not, you know, be able to complete the required paperwork, you know, from their situation. So I do think that it really does matter a lot with these types of things where the locations are, and really concerned that, you know, this is similar to what I was telling you two years ago with the COVID testing locations. You needed one in New Brunswick. You needed one in New Brunswick because lots of people live a lifestyle where they don't have a vehicle, and it was, you know, not right to ask them to hitch a ride to Edison at the Scadaway to get a COVID test at that time of desperation. It's not right for people who need fair housing and counseling services to have to leave the city that they call home to get it. So I do want to echo those concerns, and I do think that it's not too late to shore up their presence in New Brunswick. And I think that, you know, this board could play a role in that, and I hope they move in that direction. On page 12, I also just wanted to ask about 421. This is a corrections contract for food service. I know there was COVID-related increases in the contract last year, had to be amended, you know, added to. Is that dynamic the same or different? How's the size of this contract?
The delay to conduct a site this past month...
Okay. And do you anticipate having to expand on this one? I know last time it was, I guess, less, you know, that had to do more outsourcing of the work because of COVID.
This is related to food services and again, just the extension of the contact.
Okay. And yeah, I'll add to Danielle's comments on Code Blue. I think it's a really important program, and I know that some communities in New Brunswick have been leading the way. We need everybody to join in and make sure that every town has a safe place for people to go, and I would even go so far as to say we have an emergency, the homelessness, and we need to treat it as such, not just offering, you know, emergency housing on really cold nights, but doing it around the clock every day because that's ultimately what we need here in New Brunswick. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
I suppose, um, thank you.
Any favor?
Hi.
Vote, or on the charities. Okay. Do you have any commissioners that have to vote on resolutions separately?
I do.
Say the commissioner, McCollum?
Yes, McCollum with number 22-420R.
Which one?
22-420R.
I do as well.
Check.
Yep. Uh, 366R, uh, as I am on the board at the Puerto Rican Action Board.
Right under it. 22-361R.
Okay, Mr. Council? Yes, sir. After a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 22-351, and resolution 22-439, and excluding resolutions 22-349, and 22-350, which were previously voted upon, and resolutions 22-366, 22-361, 22-420, to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Go ahead.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rio?
Yes.
Now, Director, would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner McCollum, and that's resolution 22-421.
Second.
Go ahead.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Present and standing.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rio?
Yes.
Now, Director, would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Deputy Director Nara, and that's resolution 22-366.
Second.
Go ahead.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Present but not voting.
County Commissioner Director Rio?
Yes.
And finally, Director, would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Kenny, and that's resolution 22-361.
Second.
Go ahead.
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Present and voting.
County Commissioner Apple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rio?
Yes.
This time I open up the meeting in the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Please speak aloud because I have bad hearing to begin with, and with the mask it's difficult.
And I can't breathe with the mask either. My name is Ashley Hardwick of Highland Park. So in the previous meeting, it was stated that we were providing misinformation to the board of commissioners, that no animals were in a flood, or that we cropped out the high ground that was available to them in the flood. I don't know what kind of information you're getting about the flood or where it's coming from, so I just wanted to make sure that you're getting candid and true information, and that it's going to be on the record. So I'd like to show you some of the documents about flooding in the zoo that we received from our Oprah request. They come from the deputy county council, as well as Mr. Nagy, the official in charge of Johnson Park, and park director Lear. So I have a video I'd like to play. I don't know who's in charge of starting...
Just be mindful that the video is part of your time.
Okay, wait, can we pause it for a second? Okay, okay. Okay, so just to explain what this is, yes, I know it's part of my time.
This is part of your time.
Okay. So this record is from the official Kevin Nagy to the zookeeper. So we can start the video, you can go from here if it's playing. I don't see the time moving, so... There we go, there we go. Okay. So it says water three feet in the building and up to the bear cage. So the next thing we're going to see goes even further. This was an email from an engineer to Director Lear titled Johnson Park Damage. It says approximately four feet high river floodwater coverage of playground equipment. So the next thing is going to be, it was part of that same record, a photo of the playground that states Grove Two Zoo area, so you'll see that when we have next. So I want to show you the zoo from the river up to this playground and the bear cage. You can take a look for yourself and see if there's anywhere we could have cropped out high ground above three to four feet. So here we go, there's the river with Rudy came behind it, and you can see it's a few meters to the start of the zoo. This is the white fowl deer enclosure, and I'm going to measure this space for you right here. So you can see where three feet is and four feet is on this pole here, and I'm going to show you all the way down to the bottom so you can see that that is an accurate measurement. So you're going to see that four, three feet comes up to the metal brace, it's going to be right there, and then when we come up four feet, it's going to be right at that center railing. So we're going to wave and see for that. So after this measurement, the video speeds up because it would take 15 minutes, I would run out of time, but I would ask you, just look at that center rail that we're going to see right above here at the four feet level. Please look and see if you see any higher ground that could be above the center rail. So it's going to speed up from here. So we're going to pass the fowl deer enclosure, and here comes the building where Mr. Nagy stated the water was three feet in the building, and we are still going to the bear cage, that's the building right there. Now here's the goat enclosure coming up, and there's a rock feature in the center of it. This was the only place that they did have higher ground, and we were told a couple of days after the flood by a Scadaway police officers, this is how that goat died because they were fighting on these rocks, and there wasn't enough room for them, they were trying to stay alive. So one died that way. We're going to speed up again, but please keep looking for any higher ground that's above that center railing at four feet, which is like about waist-high on me. So we're going to pass after this, the snake enclosure, you can see in the middle back there, we're going to pass the raccoons in the fox. So here's the snake, there's the raccoons in the fox who actually did have higher ground right there. Here's the bear cage. By the way, they kept a full-grown bear in that cage for 20 years, and they thought that there was nothing wrong with that. So after this, the playground is right there, it's just behind me, and you can see it's more in front of the bird cages than the bear. That's the bear again. Here are the bird cages. So you can see even their little houses there are below that center railing of four feet. So as that email from Mr. Lear said, it was four feet up to the playground, we're at the playground right now. So we're going to speed up again after this, and I know I'm running out of time, I just want to show you the last area of the zoo as we go along River Road. There's a notorious picture we had of the animal up to its neck in the floodwater, and it was said last time, oh, we cropped out the dry ground that that animal could have stood on, it was in there because it liked it. So please just be looking and see if you see any elevated ground above four feet that animal could have stood on when we come to that. So the last thing I just want to say, I'm just going to, you know, I've shown you what I want to show you here. There's a statement two weeks ago that everyone here wants to do the right thing despite what we think. I just want to say, that's not despite what I think at all. There are obviously people here who want to do the right thing, they're obviously very intelligent people who base themselves on the facts and who are very experienced. So all I want to say is please just answer to me what the true facts are and act based on them, that's all I asking for. That's all I have.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Danielle Moore. Danielle Moore, Somerset Street. First, I would like to start off with our engineer, Mr. Ron Sanders. Like I said, I thank you that you work with me with text messages. I wanted to know, are these new cameras that was just put up on Livingston Avenue on the light stand by Sanford Street, are these the county or is this the New Brunswick Police Department where they brought cameras to start reading license plates?
Those were the living for me, we did video protection for the cars.
This was last week, you can't, last week that I sent it to your phone, due to where this was last week where the cameras were just put up, these are not at the traffic light, these are on the streetlights, the bright lights, new cameras. So that's not the county, that's why I'm wondering, is that the New Brunswick Police Department where they said they were putting up cameras to start reading license plates in New Brunswick?
I'm sorry, I missed your text, but those are municipal lights.
Well, okay, okay, I'll get back to you.
If there was a light on the municipal light, I would...
Okay, I'll get back to you. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I'll get back to you. Now, each one of you staying at different towns, you're basically, I would like to know, your recycling company, I can't pronounce the company, Solitaria, from you, do all of you have the same recycling company as New Brunswick does?
It depends, no, every town is...
Well, then please, once again, as I spoke to Mayor Cahill and I sent all the videos, please, you're in charge of, due to where not the city, not the Mayor Cahill, please do not renew a contract with this company again, due to where majority of the garbage through New Brunswick, I did videos, plenty of pictures, if needed, I will provide to you, due to where it's causing too much junk, these guys do a horrible job, they won't pick up your recycling if it's behind a car, they just toss it up, like I said, I had plenty of videos and I showed, I sent it to the county, but wow, we do not need to renew this contract again, where Mayor Cahill says he's cut back on money, but that's not the situation. And like I said, I will provide the evidence, videos of everything, walking around how much the garbage, majority of the garbage in New Brunswick comes from garbage day and the recycling company. My next question is regard to this river, how people, I will provide the evidence, but I guess I couldn't do it, I just had this procedure done with my back, due to where the difference, 45 years I've been here, I don't have to be an engineer to see this, how people say that floods happens every 50 years, like I said, same where I put out 48 hours, told Mayor Cahill that that river was going to flood, which is on my Facebook page, August 31st, that river is going to flood again, due to where the change of the level of the river, due to where it needs to be dredged, and the dirt needs to be removed so it can hold the water. And the way I'm saying it, I will provide you with the pictures of the next one, due to where when tide goes out, the deepest part of the Raritan River ever, as long as I lived here all my life, wow, when the tide goes out, how the whole canal empties, how due to where that river is no longer deep, I don't know if it had anything to do with the dredging when you put in your deck or what, but that's one reason, due to where I'm going to show you the levels, this is the bottom of the Raritan River, and when high tide comes in, that's the reason why you're going to see major flooding in Johnson Park again, and I will provide the evidence to you with that, due to where it needs to be dredged, and when I say dredge, it needs, the dirt needs to be removed so it can hold enough water. From where the wall is at Boye Park, you were never able to see the bottom of the river when the tide goes out. Now that you can see the bottom of everything, the way the land is, and like I said, the land has risen, rising, that's why you're going to see another major flood, and that's why I, like I said, I warned last year, I'm a person where I study, study it, I don't have to be no engineer, I've been here 45 years, I can tell the difference of when something changes, the levels, and I will provide you with the pictures to show you, but that's going to have to be dredged, where you're going to have to, especially on Johnson Park side, you're going to have to start removing the dirt in order for it to hold more water so the water does not come into Johnson Park. And like I said, you do to where going down there where I do my walks each time, high tide comes in, wow, the water's coming in more and more into Johnson Park, and like I said, wow, we're going to get plenty of rainstorms between April and May, and that's why, like I said, yes, definitely get those animals out of there, because like I said, it's not going to be no end of years for the flood.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Speak close to the microphone and speak loud, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Janet Ratliff from Somerset, New Jersey, born and raised in the Scadaway, New Jersey. Commissioner Rios, the reason you reversed the decision to close the zoo, you say, is because you received emails from people that liked the zoo. I assume the many opinions we heard last week, and I echo those sentiments, so I would like to address some of them. We heard many of these animals came from unfortunate circumstances. Being in dog rescue for 20-plus years, I have taken in dogs both from the most horrendous abusive situations and from the finest of homes. My standards in placing them never wavered regardless of where they came from or their background. They all equally deserve the best possible homes. The fact that the zoo is free, nonprofit, or not the San Diego Zoo, does not lessen the animals' right to better living conditions. One speaker stated that pictures showing animals in standing water up to their necks was misrepresenting, and pictures were photoshopped. They said there was dry land in four feet from them, and they chose to stand in the water. There is a pond in that zoo, and we have never seen an animal as much as dip a hoof in that water. They stand here in front of us all, but have never once shown a picture, document, or any proof to back up their opinions, or state anything factual to discredit us for our so-called lies. Every time we speak, our statements are backed up with proven facts and documents opposed to opinions. Have any one of them driven in a snow or rainstorm, or in freezing temperatures in the middle of the night to check on the animals? I bet not. One woman said, I'm pretty sure the vet record, there are vet reports for all the animals. I guess you missed the memo that your vet records were all destroyed in the flood. A man stated, you can get wet, animals can get wet and cold, did he research what temperatures they can actually safely sustain? I did, and it's well above the lowest temperatures this winter, hence the reason why, when the USDA did their inspection on January 27th, they found four goats huddled together, shivering. But it's super comforting knowing his opinion is they are fine. Tell that to the freezing goats. A boy questioned the fox and raccoon's enclosures, and Commissioner Kenny kindly explained that the size was determined to be adequate, but what he didn't say was your vet cited that cement does not mimic their natural habitat. I quote, "Discuss raccoon and fox enclosures with staff. Enclosures are of more than adequate size, but could use improvements in appearance and changes made for a more naturalistic appearance." These exact enclosures have been like this for years. Do you not trust your vet's assessment enough to make a change? One lady bragged about seeing the workers hosing off their cement enclosures, it is super comforting knowing of uneducated opinion is that's a great thing. Tell that to the fox and raccoons whose natural instinct is to dig umbrella. A woman states she walks through the park and can see that the animals are fine. She can see this. What about Milton the goat walking on his knees with debilitating arthritis, Huxton Ram laying lifeless, depressed, dealing with severe arthritis and falling on his face, fat blonde pigs walking on their wrists and back, Nippy being overweight with overgrown hoves, goats inbreeding, fox and raccoons pacing nonstop, and a goat alternately limping on both pastures is fine? Are we even talking about the same zoo here? Again, it's super comforting knowing her opinion is they are all fine. Remind me to never go to the vet she claims she works at. Commissioner Rios, you claimed you care deeply and from the bottom of your heart about these animals. I'm here to say, I don't believe that is true. Love that comes from the bottom of your heart is where your deepest love is reserved. If that statement by you is true, you would be standing here with us, welcoming our passion, knowledge, and facts, rather than dismissing them and treating us rudely.
Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, Taylor Myers.
Pick up the microphone, please, so we can hear you clearly.
Taylor Myers, Highland Park. And I wasn't here last meeting, but I do want to respond to the idea that these 10,000 signatures that I keep, you know, harping on, might not all be from Middlesex County. Yes, that is true. So I wanted to instead give you actual numbers, real numbers that I went through the petitions the past two weeks that I've been sorting through, and I've deleted a lot of fake signatures, a lot of duplicates, people outside of Middlesex County. So that whole 10,000 people that signed our petitions versus the 600 people that signed other petitions can be a little bit clearer. So as it stands, we, sorry, the pro-zoo petition, so the petition in favor of keeping the animals there, has 267 Middlesex County signatures, 267, so valid Middlesex County, not counting any duplicates or fake names. Our petitions from October, we do not have current dates on those because we haven't gotten a sense of the people who made the petitions, are from the end of October, 1754, 1,754 Middlesex County residents signing the petitions to release the animals to sanctuaries. I will just say, there is a lot of vitriol in the comments of the pro-zoo petitions, there's a lot of hateful, kind of, well, yes, there is an anti-Semitic hate speech comment in there, that's kind of gross, but then there's also a lot of workers' family saying, I know a guy who's going to lose his job, I know a person who works there, don't separate him from the animals. And if that's really the reason they're signing that petition, I think that should be taken into account.
Did you say that there were concern about losing their job if we don't have them?
Yeah, if we don't have the animals. I know, I personally know, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's been times, many times, to make that change.
Yeah, I do know. But then also, I just wanted to give you another number that's not even included in there. So I'm sure that you were aware that right before you made your decision to release the animals to sanctuaries, we had three petitions, oh, sorry, we had two protests, and then one after we rescinded the decision. At those protests, we collected signatures as well. So these are in-person signatures that we took during the protests at the park itself. And so that totals 256 signatures, but we weren't aware that we were going to be interested in just Middlesex County residents, right? So we didn't get the actual number of those, but when they did give their town, we have 113. So it's 113 signatures from people at the park to add to that number. And I just want to say that the pro-zoo petition was posted in the park, right? So they had posted it up in the park, which we didn't think we were allowed to do, so we didn't do that. But, okay, so that's just from three, four-hour protests in the fall before the election. I just want to remind you that before the election, we were having protests, and we were saying, you know, let's email the commissioners, let's do all this stuff. And then when you said, let's, okay, great, let's get these animals to sanctuaries, we stopped that. We stopped the protests, and we said, okay, great, and then we voted for you. I personally voted for you, all right, and I encouraged people to, enthusiastically voted for you. And so I just want to make sure that you understand where I'm coming from as a voter when then after the election you rescinded the decision, right? So that does feel very political, in my opinion, but...
I assure you that none of the decisions that we make up here, every time that we have made...
Okay, but actually, because you did say that it's for the best for the animals and the workers, and then the reason that you gave for rescinding the decision is saying, well, there were people who wanted the zoo to stay. So isn't that by nature political, right? There are people who want the zoo to, those are people, I mean, that's a political decision.
There's both sides of the argument, ma'am. And you know what I'm saying, is we don't make our decisions up here for political reasons. We do what we think is right for the best interest of everybody.
Okay, all right, but, so if that's true, that's fine. I am also going to just, for one more second, go back to those 10,000 signatures and say, this got a lot of people very, very angry when those animals died in Idaho, right? There were 84 countries on that petition, there were all 50 states and DC signed that petition. There were all sorts of stuff. I think, in my opinion, we could spin this a different way. We can make a big name in Middlesex County in a better way. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wants to speak? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Brittany Vanderstein. I am from Jackson, New Jersey. While I'm not a resident from Middlesex County, I do follow the values of see something, say something. I do have a video, if you wouldn't mind playing it, it should be under Brittany.
That will be part of your five minutes, then?
Yes, correct. So this video is made up of footage taken at all different points in time, these aren't from same days, all different days, and these are all of the raccoons and fox at Johnson Park consistently pacing, and this pacing does consist of sharp turns and the pattern of utilizing the same location in direction. I am an apprentice rehabber of Garden State Wildlife Center, so this is my specialty, raccoons, and I've been here to speak on a specific group of wildlife a handful of times already, because it does hit me really close to home, even though I am not a Middlesex County resident. It doesn't look right, and that's why I keep coming here. While I very much do understand that these animals were once someone's pets, that absolutely does not excuse the pacing, because I do doubt that every single raccoon or the fox came in pacing, this is a developed behavior. As I've stated before, pacing comes from a lack of stimulation, stress, anxiety, and this is a sure sign of zukosis. This video is about two minutes long. I made it pretty short, but I've seen this many times in person, and all of us do have video footage on it, it is online, I've seen it on YouTube, Facebook, you name it, I've seen it. And while I also understand that the living conditions are satisfactory in the eyes of the state, we all know that the state only requires the bare minimum, and the bare minimum is what they are given at Johnson Park. Their enclosures are clean, they do have adequate space, but when it comes to enrichment and upkeep of their mental health, it's not so much here, and that's why this pacing occurs. Regardless of what decision the zoo advisors come to, these animals need more than bare minimum, they so desperately require more than what they have right now. Take this pacing as one of the largest red flags possible, that there needs to be changed for your wildlife, no more bare minimum. We do need to see stimulation, that can be any type of interactive toy, regardless if it's a ping-pong ball, anything really. Raccoons are very smart animals, and they love to play and interact with each other and toys. So with this presented video of the raccoons and fox pacing nonstop, indicating psychosis, which is an extremely cruel existence, we know that this has been occurring for quite some time. Your own vet cited their enclosures needed improvements from a vet visit on February 1st, 2022, which I do have with me right now. So my question is, what has Johnson Park done to help the raccoons and the fox in the past or since the date of the vet visit in regards to stimulation to alleviate the pacing?
I think I've answered all every question here from your whole group, and I'm going to just repeat it again. We are waiting for results from our professionals, what recommendations they make for the park.
Yeah, yeah, that's for the future, but in the past and current time, but we can do the past, what has been done to alleviate the pacing? What has been done to alleviate the pacing? If anything. If no, if not, not saying that, okay, but...
I don't know.
I don't know, okay, that's fine, that's fine. Middlesex County did confirm to multiple press outlets that no animals died or injured or went missing at Johnson Park amid the September 1st storm. According to your rat records, one fowl deer breached containment from the hurricane and was captured on September 12th, which was 11 days after this, making the statement about all animals being accounted for and them going missing to be false. I do have that article with me. It's one of many, but I did bring one. So my question is, why was this false public statement made on the county's behalf if there was actually an animal missing? I don't know if you're aware of this, but it did come from a Middlesex County spokesperson. I do have one of the articles, if you wanna see it.
This is a news article from, it says, Middlesex County confirmed. Who the officials were, I can't answer that, because I don't know if anybody confirmed it. I mean, that's a statement by this news outlet, NewJersey.com, sorry.
Yeah, there are many others. One of them did specifically say a Middlesex County spokesperson, and that one does say Middlesex County official. So I didn't know who our spokesperson was, except that.
I honestly cannot answer that, because I don't have confirmation. It doesn't say in the article. So how credible is that to say, from NewJersey.com, to say that?
Well, I am bringing it up because...
Time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to keep this, or you want...
Yeah, you can keep it.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Good evening, Charlie Pratt, but once again, I have to ask, do you have any comment on the lawsuits against the chiefs of police in South Plainfield at Descantaway?
Now, why would I have a comment about that, Charlie?
Because there are two townships in your county that you have constituents here?
I have no comment about that.
No comment on that, okay. I think you should care about it, I think it's serious. I encourage you to read our article about the Descantaway lawsuits. Any concern over the fatal shooting of a citizen by Middlesex County sheriffs?
I'm sorry?
So the Middlesex County Sheriff's Detective, I believe, shot and killed someone in Plainsboro? Is that? Is that correct?
The county's not gonna make a comment on that, something that's under an investigation currently by the House of Representatives, actually by the Attorney General.
Right? Well, I'm kinda shocked that appears at least some of the elected officials were not aware of this.
No, we're not gonna make a comment on an investigation.
Okay, I wish that...
We're not at liberty to make a comment on that, Charlie. I think you should know that, you know that.
I think you were elected. You won the election, you're in the seat, you can speak. You should feel free to speak on this.
I don't think it's in the best interest of the county for any of us to make a comment on an investigation.
Do you have any comments on the concerns I raised at your last meeting about Dan Frankel and his role in the Descantaway rewarding process? No. Continuing to have concerns about the county clerk's office and the election systems. On March night, I asked some questions to the clerk, did copy the communications department as well. Can anyone here tell, did anyone get a response? Maybe it's in my spam or something, maybe there's a miscommunication like before, but... Can anybody tell me how many sample ballots had incorrect polling places, incorrect polling place information in the Middlesex election held last week?
If I'm not mistaken, you received a reply to that email request.
Maybe perhaps.
Maybe you got something from the Board of Elections. It's my recollection.
Okay, I'll double check, can you verbally tell me?
She directed to the Board of Elections. I thought I saw it coming.
All right, I will double check. An issue was raised at the most recent Board of Elections meeting about the illegal closure of polling locations in Spotswood last year. The way it's always worked, the Board of Elections votes anytime there's gonna be a change to the elections for the polling locations for the general election or the primary election. That did not happen, but there were less places open in Spotswood. Any insight into how the law was broken in that case?
Charlie, I think you have to direct that to the Board of Elections, which I'm sure you do.
I mean, this is a comment from the Board of Elections member, Commissioner Katz, that I'm referring to you for comment because that's my understanding of what happened. It was extrajudicial, done without proper board approval, and Spotswood was a mess for the election. I mean, the whole county was a mess, as you know, with the...
The whole state was a mess.
Yeah, but it was worse here, is what I'm hearing. So I think that, especially Spotswood, they were overwhelmed because they were cramming people into less places, and they had the equipment overbooked as well. Illegal consolidation of multiple voting districts on one simple piece of equipment. Is that, you know, is that your understanding?
I don't have any information on Spotswood, it's the first time I'm hearing it, but I think you have to direct this message to the Board of Elections.
Okay. Remington Burnet, why did you hire them to do the redistricting after they failed to keep up with their workload and missed the statutory deadline for submitting the board maps?
Remington Burnet was hired by the Board of Elections. And as you know, they do this work statewide.
I'm pretty sure that the county sets the budget, right? You just hired Remington Burnet to do the redistricting a couple meetings ago.
That's not accurate.
You did. I spoke on it at this podium.
By statute, the counties required to fund the activities of the Board of Elections. The actual selection of the vendor is that of the Board of Elections. And that selection was pretty obvious because I think they actually have done every county in the state of New Jersey and state of New Jersey.
And it is pretty obvious that all that is because they gave $7 million in political donations over my lifetime. So I gotta say that you have a...
Thank you, and time is up, and time is up. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? You have a motion to close?
No, no, no.
Well, let's go, folks. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Nicholas Haas, Somerset, NJ. I was encouraged to see some improvement to Johnson Park regarding the demolition of the roof on the deer run-in shed. I'm glad to know that we won't have to worry about that particular roof collapsing on any of the animals' heads going forth. I see you are cutting trees down within the pen area where the fowl deer live. That's a great call considering how saturated that ground can get and how poor the drainage is. We all know water is the enemy to wood, and root rot will kill any tree over a period of time. So I hope that you're able to remove all of the unhealthy trees from the animals' living space. It would really be a shame for a 75-foot tree to fall on someone's head, including a human animal. I've been hanging out with Merrill and Thompson, and I must say, those parks are a lot nicer than Johnson. The workers are pleasant, they wave to everyone, and I actually have conversations with the patrons at the park. When I go to Thompson and Merrill, I don't feel that same sense of eeriness that I do with Johnson. That's probably the case because the shelters in both parks are sturdy, more structurally sound, and actually have walls which are able to surround the animals and keep them safe away from the weather elements. The animals look healthier and happier at Merrill and Thompson, and there is no now older stench lingering like you have at the one at Johnson. The deer at Thompson have much nicer, shinier coats, which clearly reflects a more adequate diet than the deer who live at Johnson. There is a lot more naturalistic land for the deer at Thompson to forage and prosper with. At Johnson, the deer are stock-seeking shelter under a run-in barn facing the side of a river road where the rafters have failed on top of a leaky roof. Days after it rains at Thompson and Merrill, you don't see puddles of stagnant water accumulating around in the park like you do with Johnson. Oh, wait, I forgot. Johnson is a designated FEMA flood zone. The water has nowhere to go but to the lowest elevation point, and this is exactly where the animals are housed. Being that all three parks are under the same system, which is facilitated by Middlesex County, why are shelters in working environments much more sound at these other places as opposed to Johnson Park?
I answered all your questions already, so I'm not gonna add that. You have five minutes.
This is a new question now that is unanswered. That's why I'm asking it now.
We're still waiting for our recommendation from our engineer.
What I'm saying, like, before this point over here, like, this, you know, Johnson Park just didn't have its head decapitated, you know, at day one. I'm saying this is like an ongoing matter that's been happening for years on end with the degradation of the park, the material that the park is composed of. So all of that, that's what I'm saying, like, where is the accountability from today all the way in the past for the last 10 years, five years? Three years, two years?
Thank you for your comments.
If the animals seem happy at Merrill and Thompson, and they're not happy at Johnson, when did you say that your employees at Johnson are failing the animals?
I'm proud of our employees that we have, and they take good care of the animals.
What about the raccoon and the fox exhibit psychosis?
I answered your questions already, so you're just repeating questions that you've asked in the past already, so...
I mean, how would you explain on Ms. Brittany's video over here, like, what's going on with them? I mean, it's pretty horrific, right? Because you wouldn't want that done to you. You know, if you were zooming around back and forth in a cage, best believe that everybody here would be trying to get you out. You know, is that love? So you told us that the commissioners, as you just said, right? And employees don't wanna see the animals hurt or mistreated. So what do you think you're doing to the animals when you allow the public to feed them french fries, bread, and potato chips? Where are the employees who are supposed to be monitoring and enforcing your own signs that say, do not feed animals, they're on a strict diet? If you're proud of your employees, wouldn't you want them to abide by the rules? You made that sign, that's a rule. If I work for you and I don't abide by that, then you die.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Dan Marie Kleiber, Middlesex Borough. And just to touch on what he was saying about people feeding the animals.
Speak louder, please.
What he was saying about people feeding the animals when they're not supposed to. One trip I was there, there was a lady with a stick, with a chicken leg, on the end of the stick, feeding the fox. And she told us, oh, the caretaker said I could do it.
I find it hard to believe that one of our workers would say that that would be unacceptable food to feed the animals. But we'll stress the point of, to our employees, Rick, that they monitor that very closely so no people can feed the animals.
And I have a picture I can send you, so...
Please say that again.
I have a photo I can send you of this woman feeding the fox. All right, in my speech. As longtime Middlesex County resident of Descantaway and Middlesex Borough, I was very disappointed to learn that the county reversed their decision to close the zoo and hand the animals over to sanctuaries where they would have been taken care of properly. Because of the poor conditions, coupled with the extreme flooding issues, these animals need to be removed. Too many times, I witnessed injured and limping animals, animals living in solitude, we saw in the video. Constantly pacing and severely overweight animals. The zoo is not a healthy environment. These animals have greater needs that the zoo cannot meet, and they have better options available to them. Please consider the animals' well-being over and above the humans that like to see them. And just a little story to prove my point. Several years ago, we had a newborn fawn in our yard. The mother got hit and killed shortly after birth. So it wandered around yard, from yard to yard in our neighborhood. And we saw our neighbor, and they told us that the mother had gotten killed. So we called the rescue, and they told us what to do. And they said if it starts crying, to get it to the rescue as soon as possible. So it closed the sun down one of the days, the fawn started crying, and it was right under my bedroom window. So how could I go to bed knowing that animal was in such distress and close to death? So we drove an hour, over an hour, to a rescue so it could be in proper hands. I didn't know what to do for it, so the best thing to do was get it to someone who does. Similar to the Johnson Park animals, they need to be with someone who knows how to properly care for them. Some animals so crippled with arthritis that the only solution your vet had was to euthanize them. Case in point, the mother goat that died alone during childbirth along with her newborn baby. We've seen all, had a few animals that were lucky enough to be released from the sanctuaries pregnant and pregnant. You waited the entire winter to make a decision about the animals. Through below-freezing windy days and nights, and rain that floods their enclosures on a regular basis, then freezes to solid ice. It doesn't have to be this way. Sanctuaries are all lined up to give the animals proper care and shelter. And when I hear the wind blowing below freezing days and nights, it breaks my heart to know that the animals aren't protected in a nice, warm barn where they deserve to be. There are two types of people. The kind that like to simply see animals, and the other type see them, and they're suffering and do something about it. The animals at Johnson Park are crying. How do you sleep at night? Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Speak close to the microphone, please, and loud.
Good evening, my name is Peter Ortiz, I'm from New Jersey. I'm here to speak on behalf of the animals who died or injured or went missing at Johnson Park from the September 1st storm. The county has acknowledged a confirmed pig drowning from the storm at Merrill Park, but has yet to answer questions or acknowledge the deaths of Ricky, the beloved goat, or the five baby fowl deer at Johnson Park. The county was charged with caring for those animals, and we are simply asking for transparency and accountability as to what has happened to Ricky the goat and the five baby fowl deer. I'd also like to cite a January 19, 1984 newspaper article in which the reporter, in speaking with the Johnson Park zookeeper, writes that one of the ponies at the compound died after the overeating of tidbits and junk food offered by the steady procession of human visitors. Fast forward to now, where we recently had obese pigs near death, a grossly overweight pig died, and Nippy, the mini horse, documented as quote, "over-conditioned uncle." And these are just the animals we are aware of. What is clear is that in the last 38 years, the county and Johnson Park Zoo has failed these animals time and time again. On any given day, especially on nice days, there is nonstop feeding from the public of cornbread, cheese crackers, peanuts, Twinkies, et cetera. And no measures have been taken to stop them other than the same "do not feed the animals" signs that were there decades ago. You have been, you have long been aware that animals being fed this way by the public have become sick and even die. You claim you and the workers care deeply for these animals, yet the public is allowed to literally feed them to death. Again, I ask, where is the accountability? In the same 1984 newspaper article, the reporter writes that, quote, "The deep freeze claimed the lives of a chicken and a wood duck," and that, quote, "Some of the deer suffered frostbite on ears, which later turned grand risk and fell off." Your zookeeper went on to state, "We don't usually lose too many to the cold." But the zookeeper's response begs the question, how many is too many? Were these animals being cared for as they are at, were these animals being cared for as they are at Uncle Neil's Sanctuary, we wouldn't be worried about any animals dying from the cold because they would be in proper shelter. It was 10 degrees that particular weekend when those animals froze to death at Johnson Park and suffered frostbite. Now, I'm fully aware, this was many years ago, but the point is that the animals at Johnson Park continue to suffer and die to this day. That is why we are here. The same practices and lack of insulated enclosures from years ago still exist at Johnson Park today, even knowing the tragedies of the past. Finally, on January 27th of this year, during the... Finally, on January 27th of this year, during a USDA inspection, it was noted, quote, "Several of the male goats housed together near the road were witness to be shivered." It was also noted in that report that it was 16 degrees at the time of that inspection. The lowest documented temperature this January was 1.9 degrees. That is almost nine degrees lower than the weekend of the animals' death so many years ago, as noted in that newspaper article from 1984. Why hasn't the county done anything to protect the animals from freezing temperatures in 38 years? Again, you claim that the workers care deeply for these animals, but why should we believe that when animals are still dying there? Commissioner Rios, can you please tell us your plan going forward regarding these particular problems, these specific problems and concerns about these missing animals?
I've already stated my comments about what, what we're waiting for, and then we'll determine a plan of action following the report.
Okay, but is there any update as to the animals who were reported missing? And as far as I know, there hasn't been?
I don't know of any update on the report. Of, of reported animals missing.
Okay, is that something that you're actively looking at? Uh, I don't know if we are working on that, Rick.
Certainly, Rick, that's, that's information that I'm happy to gather for you and I can report back. Thank you. Thank you. Please speak close to the microphone and loud. Your name and address. And you have five minutes.
Nirvan Agarwal from Edison, New Jersey. And do you guys know what zoonosis is? I've seen many people talk about it, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, did you hear what you said?
Do you guys know what zoonosis is? Many people have been talking about it.
No.
So it's a disease that's found in zoo animals. It makes them go, it makes them like go crazy and that's because they're lonely and depressed. And, and all, and most of the animals in Johnson Park Zoo, like the fox and the raccoons, for example, have zoonosis. And if, if they're under such good care, then why do they have this?
I can't answer that, so.
Okay, but still, why, why would they still have zoonosis if they're under such good care, as you said?
The, the animals are checked by veterinarian.
Yeah, but people said earlier that the veterinarian will even just say they give them painkiller and if the painkiller don't work, they'll euthanize them.
There has been no conversation from our end, from our vet, about euthanizing any of the animals yet.
So you've given many, you've given many animals to sanctuaries, like Huxley, the depressed ram, and the two pigs. Now those animals, earlier those animals were, had zoonosis and like diseases like Huxley had arthritis. Now that they're at a sanctuary, they're all getting better, so why don't you just give the rest to them? It's not, and, and don't think of it as like, oh, the people won't be able to see the animals anymore. It's just, it's just a relocation.
Like I said, we're waiting for a report on recommendations, what to do with the animals and the facility.
Yeah, and these animals are in flood prone zones. And we've had many hurricanes in the past couple of months. And these animals have drowned and many have gone missing and died.
Anything else?
Yeah, but what do you have to say about those animals that have gone missing and died?
He's gonna give us a report, let us know, he's gonna further, uh, investigate that. Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Um, Michelle Granberg, I'm from Del Ram, but I lived in South Brunswick for over 16 years. And I'm gonna use four minutes of my time for a video, the video is under Ryan Feldman, if you can call that up.
That's part of your five minutes.
That's part of my five minutes, I'm sorry, so that's four minute video. So everybody, please look at your monitors and there's no narration, so you'll need to read the captions, please. Please reflect upon this question, what reasons do you have for denying the rest of the animals a chance at a full time life in the sanctuary?
Thank you. Your time is up. Anyone else? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Speak close to the microphone.
Good evening, Commissioners Ryan Feldman, Bridgeton, New Jersey. I am here with you tonight on an update on Huxley, the ram who you released to my sanctuary, Uncle Neil's home. Last meeting I shared that our vet diagnosed him with severe arthritis based on X-rays. Multiple vets have now stated that it started years ago and Rick Lear has stated to me that he has been in your care since 2013. I asked you what was done for Huxley at the last meeting and you said nothing. Well, last week, Huxley had his appointment at a specialist for his arthritis and we learned that his condition is so end stage that he isn't even a candidate for surgery. We moved forward with steroid injections to help manage his gain and we were almost unable to do the injection because his condition is so end stage. They couldn't even get to his joint. His official diagnosis via U Penn's New Bolton Center was severe osteoarthritis. Years, for years, he has been suffering and not a single pain medication, not a single anti-inflammatory or any regard at all for his life or well-being. Even his lab work that we did when he came to my sanctuary showed abnormal protein levels and showed that his diet was poor. You weren't feeding him a proper diet. You saw the video of him, you saw it again tonight, falling on his face, and you ignored him. Your zookeepers ignored him. And your zookeepers that you're so proud of, let his condition get so bad that all we can do for him now is palliative care. I know that you don't work at the zoo, but the people who you pay, their negligence is inexcusable, their inaction is reckless, and animals are dying and have died because of them. They have absolutely no business being in charge of anyone's care and you are the ones who are allowing it. It is something that you have control of, Rick, it is something that you have control of. You all saw the pigs in the video, you saw their transformations. They came to me from Johnson Park, unable to see because they were so obese, walk because they were so obese, suffering from end stage arthritis, and what did you do? Nothing, nothing except hire a corrupt veterinarian to almost kill two of them. But now look at them, they are happy, thriving, walking, running. They're being taken to a hospital, they are having ramps built for them, they are having prosthetics built for them because that is what sanctuary does. That is why these animals belong in a sanctuary as you promised. How can caring, empathetic people, who you claim that your zookeepers are, allow animals to eat themselves to death? How can they ignore them until they are immobile or drown in floodwaters? Commissioner Director, again, I'm referring to the people who you claim to be so proud of, what an embarrassment. You should all be ashamed, every single one of you. Commissioner Director, I gave you an opportunity last meeting to share with all of us, what makes you proud about your employees? And you couldn't share a single thing, but you keep saying it tonight. And to help you answer Nirvan's question about why the animals have zoonosis if they're under such great care, the answer is, they're not under such great care. They're not under great care and you can't even admit that, but you know it to be true. It is baffling that you all attempt to use our credibility as a distraction from the real issue at hand because we've never made a claim that wasn't supported by photos, by videos, by Oprah requests and USDA inspection reports. Your credibility should be the real focus here. You lied about closing the zoo, you lied to sanctuaries who work hard and spent money preparing for the animals. And on the day that you announced that you were going back on your word, Rick, you emailed all of us and said, "We're working out a transportation schedule." But you weren't, were you? Another lie. So you sit up there and you won't even answer any of our questions, yes or no? So why and who are you all to question anyone's credibility? We've been inquiring about the fifth missing pig from Johnson Park, we found him, he's at Merrill. And have you seen him? He looks like Wally before he was let go to transfer to my sanctuary. He's overweight, his skin is horrendous, and we will not let him go fat blind like you let Wally go. So please, get your vet out there and I hope the care at Merrill is better than it is at Johnson Park. The deer, we have copies of Oprah requests and USDA inspection reports that show 11 missing deer after the hurricane, that were seen right before the hurricane and you claim that they died from EHD, but did you do a necropsy? You have to have a body to do a necropsy, so I'm assuming that you didn't. So, I mean, to support your claim, you have nothing, right? Just your credibility. The saddest part of all of this is that you have sanctuaries committed to taking in these deserving animals and you refuse them. It is clear that you aren't thinking about them and only thinking about yourselves. For what? Greed? To save face? Money? Whatever it is, it is the wrong thing to do and you know it. So I have a question for every single commissioner sitting here in front of me. Would, hello, you're not even looking at me. Would you trade places with the animals? Would you trade places with Huxley? If the answer is no, then there's a problem and you know it.
Your time is up. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Please speak close to the microphone.
My name is Avinash Kachi, I live in Edison, from last 38 years. And I have taken some of my family members to the zoos in the county and I've enjoyed them. I didn't know that certain things were going on like being shown here. And so now I'm being aware of that. In the last couple of videos I saw the meetings, people are giving some excuses, like, you know, our fam, our children got bitter for some disease or illness or whatever. Uh, I mean, county doesn't have the responsibility to provide medical care at the expense of the animals. County doesn't have the responsibility to provide free entertainment to people when they want, at the expense of the animals. And, you know, every time, and, and in all these videos, you'll see that you are waiting for a report. What is the ETA of that report? Is there any timeline for that? Because nobody said any date and we'll get the report on such and such date.
We're waiting for a report on, on recommendations, what to do with the animals.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, what is the date on which the report will be given?
When are we getting the report?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping next meeting, we're hoping next meeting.
That's good, you know. And, uh, and one thing I noticed that, you know, there is, in 2020, I had written to the county that, you know, I saw the raccoon going around and around. And at that time I was getting interested in these animal welfare issues. So I wrote and I was told that, oh, we are giving the best care possible and the USDA inspected. The USDA is one of the worst agencies for animal welfare. According to USDA, farm animals don't even have the protection of, uh, that the regular threats have at home. Uh, you can take a farm animal and cut off its ears and cut off its testicles of the pig or whatever without anesthesia, and it's all considered standard practice. So maybe USDA is not the right agency to inspect this zoo and certify that it's a nice place for animals. It's like, you know, sending the Department of Conservation people to inspect somebody's home for being fit for a foster home. It's like that. So, you know, uh, let us hope that the report comes next week and something gets done pretty soon.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Please speak loud and close to the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Nitu Jujuwala, I'm from Edison, New Jersey. Um, I would like to speak about Johnson Park and the mini horse, Nippy. Um, I specifically feel sad for this animal because he has been existing in solitude year after year, all this while. As is the case with the fox, this is no lifewarn animal. Fox is displaying, um, uh, distress and so is he. So when my son and I go to the park, he comes running to us. He is in need of companionship and they are social animals who deserve to be in company of other animals. So my understanding is Nippy was labeled not good with other animals? I'd like to know what is this assessment based on? Who, who determined that?
Repeat that again.
Um, he was labeled as not good with other animals? Who determined that? What was the assessment based on?
Which animal, I'm sorry.
Nippy, the mini horse?
Mini horse?
Yeah.
Nippy, is what you said?
Yes.
And you want to know who, who determined that he's unsuitable to be with other animals?
Exactly.
Question, I, I don't know if you have that.
He was labeled as such.
I don't know, I don't know that answer.
Is it possible to find out what was the basis of this statement?
We, we could, we could find out.
You could find out?
We could find out.
Excellent. Because, um, when the animals are distressed, they can exhibit behavior that's separate from when they are in a good, uh, healthy environment. So the right assessment would be when he is in a good, healthy environment. Right now he's lonely, I don't know how, you know, you came to that conclusion.
After the meeting, leave your, your email or your phone number with, with the clerk here.
Sure.
So he can get back to you on that.
Oh, that is great. Thank you so much. Um, so animal tech, Nippi, are the emotional support animal? Because they're so cute. Um, they provide emotional support to people who are sick. So they make wonderful therapy animals. And unfortunately, in this case, it looks like he needs therapy. And, you know, if you, if you can look into that, why, if at all, he's not good with other animals, he seems distressed and he seems to be lacking company, I would like someone to please look into that. And, um, on February 1st, the vet has diagnosed him as over-conditioned and suggested monitoring and a follow-up in two to four weeks. Uh, has anything been done about that? Two weeks have passed since February 1st. And four weeks to actually.
I, I love that. I didn't get the, somebody said that the animal was late or something.
Yeah, so he's been diagnosed as over-conditioned by your vet on 1st of February. Um, and they were suggested monitoring and a follow-up in two to four weeks.
So it's Nippi that we're talking about? And he was diagnosed on February 1st with something? Could we look in the records?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, Rick, we'll look into that.
Santin?
No, he was diagnosed as over-conditioned, though I don't know what that means in vet speak. So we'll have to get an explanation.
Yeah, so, you know, with all the junk food that's been thrown at his enclosure, I don't think he's getting a healthy diet. I mean, something really needs to be done about people throwing food. I was at the zoo and I personally saw people bringing food to throw at him. There was chips, there was Doritos, there was pretzels, anything that junk was being thrown at these animals and they go at it. And he needs exercise. He's always standing by the fence. So they need exercise, they need a healthier diet. And we need to know what's really happening with this guy.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, Rick will reiterate with our employees to make sure that, that none of these people that come there to visit will feed the animals any food that's not healthy for them.
And how do you, how do you propose that could be done? Is there any plan for such a thing to happen?
Well, I guess, I guess it would be just keeping a closer look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My Anna Crasaska from Purthamboy.
Please speak louder.
Anna Crasaska from Purthamboy.
Okay.
Can you please play, um, can you please play my video?
I don't know what she said.
If you don't do your thing.
There it is. Okay, this is part of your five minutes.
So I just wanted to say, um, because we do a lot of talking about the zoo and the animals and they can't come in and talk for themselves. So I wanted to show a few videos of exactly who we're talking about. Um, so I think we can all agree that these animals, they're all cute and they deserve the best that we can offer them, right? No matter if we want to close the zoo or not, we all just want the best for the animals. Also, in this, in this video and in the next two videos you will see from Kristen, you can see that these mothers and their kids, they form bonds together. Um, whether mother-child or brothers or animals, they form bonds together. And at the last meeting, a lot of people called Johnson Park a sanctuary. So I follow a lot of sanctuaries and, um, I would expect when these goats had babies, I would expect that they would be safe, that they would have a vet on call right away. Because at a lot of sanctuaries, you see the vet, they stay there when the goats give birth or any of the animals give birth, they come in right away. Um, at a sanctuary, they typically lock up the animals at night. So you wouldn't let this goat, she lost her one baby to a fox or it just disappeared about two days later. So at a sanctuary, if you lock the animals up, you wouldn't have babies or any other animals go missing overnight. Um, also, they have cameras to watch the animals. So you can, you can also see the bonds they form. You can see like families cuddle up together and sleeping together or they're able to watch the animals even when they're not outside. Um, so also, as someone who loves to see the animals, just like everyone else, I would like to ask if you could please provide an update on the goats that gave birth?
This time, I don't think we can, we can answer that. Rick, can you answer that?
Yes, doctor. All mothers, all babies are fine. They've been examined by our vet and we're caring for them.
Can you tell us how many babies they had?
Each mother had two babies, so that's a total of four babies.
How about the third mom?
What about the third mom?
Is she pregnant? I haven't seen her anywhere.
Uh, no other females have given birth to any babies.
Are they still at Johnson Park?
They are under the care at Johnson Park.
Can you provide photos at the next meeting of them?
If you want to see the animals, you can just go to Johnson Park and see them.
Yeah, but I don't see them.
So what's the purpose of the photos that you want us to bring here?
Well, I go to the park and I love to see them. So I'm curious if I would like to see them.
Do we still have them, pardon my, can we still have them in the birthing shed that you spoke about before, Rick?
So if we go to the park, we can see them?
Time's up.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Billick and I reside in South Plankfield. As Anna mentioned, I also have two videos that I'd like to share.
That's part of your five minutes.
Absolutely. And I'd like to show these two videos because in my opinion, they define why I am here for you today. And it's not only for my love for the animals, but also for the love and bonds that they have for one another. So in these two videos, you'll see two different families, mothers and their kids, and what that interaction looks like. And you'll also see interspecies interactions as well. And when you watch these, I hope you see the purity and innocence of these animals just like I do. So if IT can start them, that'd be great. And I believe that my ask of you is really just quite simple. I just ask that when you're reviewing the plans from the advisors or considering relocations to other parks, that you think of these videos and what they were showing here, the bonds with their siblings, the bonds with their mothers. And my hope is that you'll make every effort to remember, uh, these videos and these moments to avoid further disrupting their livelihoods, their normal and their relationships that they've established over maybe the few short months they've been here or the years that they've been here. And the only other thing that I'd like to add is I believe it was at last meeting, there was a comment made about the lack of Middlesex County representation that comes here to this meeting and speaks on behalf of this topic. And what I have found is that when I speak to my friends that live in this county, colleagues that work in this county, they're unaware that the decision to keep the zoo has been made. They're still under the notion that it's being closed and animals are being relocated to sanctuaries. So I just wonder if the lack of representation here is truly due to a lack of awareness of where we're at today. And I just wonder if there's anything we can do to be a little bit clearer on where the stance is at this point, due to the fact that a decision was made later in the game. And many residents in this county may have simply just stopped following the story because they thought things were going in a direction that they not, are no longer doing so at this time. So that's just something that I wanted to mention. I don't know if it's something that has been brought up to you before, but I'm not sure if you have any thoughts on that, actually.
We'll make an announcement when we get our report and in what direction we want to go in upon the recommendation, we'll make an announcement on what we're going to do.
Okay, that's fair. Can I ask a question as well? The report that you get from the advisors, is that something that will be presented to you all privately and then announced to the public after your decision has been made? Or is it a presentation that will coincide together to you as well as the public at the same time?
No, we're going to be looking at that internally and then making our, our, our decision based on the recommendations for, uh, for the park.
Okay, so the part that will be planned, uh, thank you.
Anyone else? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Speak close to the microphone, please. No problem.
Kevin Klink, I am the owner and founder of Blue Free Farm. I'm from Skelman, New Jersey. I have an email that I sent on February 3rd. If I could give a copy to everyone, or the officer give a copy to everyone? I may not have my, yeah, I'll give you a second.
Mr. Klink, though, your time is running so fast.
Okay, uh, the subject of this email was emergent release request for an injured male goat. This male goat is an older spotted, blue-eyed male. Rick, you probably know which one I'm talking about. He's a full ram horn on one side and a nub on the other. He's nicknamed Blue Zeus, possibly. Um, okay, so the first paragraph I'm going to skip is, it didn't get responded to, is an email. And I'm just going to jump ahead. Please allow me to provide a forever home for him. Uh, I was informed that he naturally falls to the bottom of the herd hierarchy with his physical ailment and he is suffering. He has a prominent limp and something wrong with, it's probably advanced, uh, you know, osteoporosis or something also with one of his front legs. Um, the goat gets pushed around when food is provided, he's often last to eat. Another concern is that he is housed with pregnant females. Some of this doesn't apply anymore because he's been moved to Merrill. But, uh, I'll just continue with this. There, that are about to kid, I'll skip ahead. There are limited options for simply relocating the goat to another pasture. One without the males would be constantly trying to establish dominance. The other option is an entirely different species, whitetail, fallow deer, deer. They push him around too and he is often sits by the fence lonely. There, that is no life for an old goat. Like I stated, he has been relocated to Merrill Park since this. Um, but I have been told there, he still gets bullied by bigger goats. Um, you may recognize my name and my animal sanctuary, Blue Free Farm, due to previously being vetted as the new home for the alpacas. I've been in contact with Rick many times regarding them. He's come to my home, where my sanctuary is. And I also have made a site visit inside the park with the alpacas and Chris Timm, the Haven Supervisor, in the later part of last year. We had arrangements to pick the alpacas up. Rick sent me paperwork to complete the transfer through the USDA, only to have the weather cancel the pickup. Then there were further issues and delays. Now ultimately, we are here. I am very aware of the current review and assessment that is taking place. Once they are ready to come home, I have a designated pasture equipped with a custom-built run-in for them. After being told about this beautiful animal, referring back to the goat, I was able to visit him earlier in the week, which would have been February 1st, um, since this is a month and a half old. And I was able to witness firsthand the pain and sadness. He's not happy. You could feel that looking into his eyes. He deserves to be happy. I was excited when he came over to me while the other goats were eating fresh egg. I fed him some baby carrots. Once I ran out, he went to the fresh egg to try and eat, but he had to lay down to do so, assumingly because of the pain in his leg. Uh, obviously, I don't have attached pictures because this was an email. By sanctuary can offer him comfort, retirement and a loving herd to join. He would be housed immediately in quarantine rehabilitation pen upon arrival here, there, where he will be fully vetted. He will immediately address the issue with his left front knee and leg. I am capable and willing to provide him with specialized care needed. I currently have an established herd of three goats and a sweet guardian miniature donkey, and he would be properly integrated with them. This sanctuary is my home. I live on site. My animals mean more to me than I could explain. I am fortunate enough, uh, I am fortunate enough to be retired and direct my focus solely on the care and well-being of the animals. Please understand the emergent nature of my request to provide this innocent goat the care and love he fully deserves. I also wanted to let you know, oh, that's okay. So that doesn't pretend, that I couldn't attend this meeting when I sent this. So my question is, you can see who this was sent to and it was sent on February 3rd. And I want to know why I never received any reply from anybody listed or any of the commissioners or Rick on my request to remove this goat. Anyone care?
Time's up.
To be honest with you, it's my fault. I thought that it would be looked at and answered and it wasn't. And so I apologize awfully for not getting you an answer. Um, I was just writing a note for myself for tomorrow. So that's the best answer I can give. My apologies.
Did it further evaluate to see if he could be pulled immediately? I understand the assessment's coming, but obviously that's for the park as a whole. I feel obviously like how Ryan spoke earlier, there are certain animals that are, I mean, probably too far blonde at this point to even get care. It's probably just going to be pain management until, you know, he passes away, but...
I'll be honest with you, that's what I was going to ask about. I'm not saying that we're going to send the goat your way, but, you know, get more info on the goat and then find out, you know, where we're with the study to see how close we are.
Okay, can I email you directly for that?
You can email everybody, but I'm answering, you know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Edward Roberto from Newark, New Jersey.
From where?
Newark, New Jersey.
Okay.
I heard a lot of different statements last meeting from people who love the zoo. One of the statements that stood out to me was from a man who said, "It's not a zoo, it's a sanctuary." He further stated, "This sanctuary is there to take the kids and older people to." Nowhere in the definition of a sanctuary does it mention a place to take kids and older people to. Actually, sanctuaries are exactly the opposite. Actually, sanctuaries are exactly the opposite. Animals are not put on display at a san, at a sanctuary for public enjoyment. These people are so self-absorbed that they can't fathom the idea that an animal sanctuary is about the animals, not the people. If Johnson Park Animal even by definition is a sanctuary, why aren't the animals housed and tended to like Uncle Neil's home and all the other sanctuaries that were lined up? There are substantial differences that are leaps and bounds above anything Johnson Park could do for them. We've all seen the many beautiful videos of Milton, Uxley, Ernie, and Samwell shown here. At Johnson Park, the recommendation for each one of these animals was euthanasia. Now they are all living their best life, and nobody would even recognize them as animals that once resided at Johnson Park. This man is clearly and seriously deniable and has no idea what he was talking about. He even claimed that the workers care very much for the animals and love them. If they truly do, they would realize the animals need more than they can provide for them. Selfless love is not allowing animals to freeze, overheat, suffer with crippling arthritis, and to do without bad care to benefit his, their job. Um, so why is it these vulnerable animals' responsibility to entertain kids and older people? I wonder if kids and older people would really want this if they understood the truth. And one more thing, um, there are people who enjoy watching dog fighting too. In their mind, it makes sense and it's fine for the animals. Does this mean that dog fighting should be legal? I would agree with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Nita Menon, and I, uh, live in Somerset, New Jersey. I did live, however, for about four years in Highland Park, two years in South Plainfield, and about six years in Edison, so I have been in Middlesex County for a while. Um, for me personally, the litmus test of whether something is fair or not is one simple question. Just to ask yourself, if it was me in that person's place or that animal's place, would it be fair? Right? If you put yourself in somebody else's shoes and the situation is not fair, then it's not right. And so, a couple of concerns that, you know, we've been bringing up, uh, every time we come to these meetings are essentially the fact that these animals are right now in a flood zone, the fact that they don't have enrichment, right? They don't have mental stimulation, and so they're essentially going out of their minds, and they have terrible vet care. All of them are in terrible shape, and you see that if they are taken away from here and given better care, that they actually do thrive. So that's a good indication that whatever care they are getting now is just not adequate. When you look at it in itself, it's difficult to understand if it's adequate or not because you have nothing to compare with. But when you do have something to compare with, it's very easy to tell that what they're getting right now is just not adequate. So, if you look at each of these, the, the fact that they're in a flood zone, the fact that they don't have enough enrichment and vet care, if you put yourself in their place, I can understand that obviously it's very difficult to say, "What does it feel like to drown?" Right? Um, so if everybody would just humor me for one minute, just one minute, I'm going to say, take in a deep breath, and I'm going to come down, just for one minute, right? So breathe in, fifty-nine, fifty-eight, fifty-seven, fifty-six, fifty-five, fifty-four, fifty-three, fifty-two, fifty-one, fifty, forty-nine, forty-eight, forty-seven, forty-six, forty-five, forty-four, forty-three, forty-two, forty-one, forty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, twelve, eleven, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. That was one minute. Now, on average, it takes eight minutes for somebody to asphyxiate and die. When you're thrashing around, when you really are fighting for your life, it can be much longer. But that one minute, I'm sure a lot of people weren't able to hold their breath. If you are drowning, it is one of the worst ways to die. It is long, it is tiring, it is, it is terrible, especially when you don't know what's happening. You, the, the fact that people say, "A couple of animals died, a couple of animals are missing, we don't know how they died, we don't know where the vet records are, they're, they're lost", I feel that is terribly inconce, inconclusive because we're not putting ourselves in their place. As far as enrichment goes, I think we afford people in jail more enrichment. We don't put them in isolated cells. We give them books to read, we give them outside time. We, we give them company of other people. And people in jail could be people who did something wrong. These are animals who didn't do anything wrong, and we're giving them a cement block to essentially spend their time. I think to, to actually figure out enrichment for animals, you don't need a report. In today's age of Google, you could Google anything you wanted, and you could take small, low-cost efforts to give an animal better enrichment. Give them the company of other animals of their kind.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Motion to close? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn? Considerate. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried.